Wire. It will. Require a little bit of excavation work in order to create a level spot there. So what Connie, my wife was talking about was the concern about. The. The erosion control that we have implemented. In accordance with the runoff plan that was submitted a couple of years back. And. Let's see, King's Arrow. Did. Find that placing the shed at the eighty seven foot from the eight, from the high water line, which is where. Our principal structure is. Felt that it met the standard of the chapter one thousand. And should be acceptable by the Department of Environmental Protection.
Um, ju- just. And so that everyone is, is, is clear. I mean, for first of all. What the planning board is, is applying as a standard and what's under discussion are the specific provisions in Reedfield's land use ordinance. Those are, those provisions are consistent with the shoreline zoning law and rules. But in some cases, they're not exactly the same. So just so you know, we're, we're. We're following Reedfield's land use ordinance. Not the, the letter of the shoreline zoning law and rules. And as I said, in, you know, in some cases, they're not exactly the same. And the provision that is, one of the provisions that's of particular importance in Reedfield's land use ordinance. Is in the nonconforming structure section. And it says, and, and the significance of the, the setback of your principal structure is in this section. And it says expansion of an accessory structure. That is located closer to the normal high water line of a water body, tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland. Then the principal structure is prohibited. And it goes on. So rather than, than, than being a standard to be met, it is a prohibition that it. Under no circumstance can a larger accessory building be located. Closer to normal high water than the principal structure. And then, in addition, there is the matter of the planning board needing to find. That the structure in general has been located. In conformance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. So those two things are related. But they're, they're not exactly the same standard, two different, two different standards that would apply to this situation. And I say all of that just so that we're all, all clear on what the standard is that's being applied here. So please, please go on.
Okay, what else am I overlooking to discuss?
Well, I don't if, whatever else you think is pertinent. If, if, if there's, there's nothing, that's, that's fine, but I didn't know.
There are a few things that I feel that are pertinent and I'm, I'm not confident that. The board has a, a clear understanding of the property that we are here to discuss. And so this property is, is not a seasonal property. It is a year full time year around. Home that we are living in. So it's not a matter of, and I think what we're here to discuss. And to clarify or agree on is. The word practical in the greatest practical extent. So. It was very important for me as a husband to be able to make. Smart choices within this challenging. Property that would allow my wife to be able to live here and take care of. Her home by herself when I'm no longer here. So. Even though the current location of the shed here was. Chosen by me as the greatest practical extent, given that there was no excavation required to manipulate. The property in order to get it to sit here and be functional. But and as I've noted in the other four locations that were. Proposed or and or considered would not leave. The. Location practical for usage and. For, for. A variety of reasons that are listed in the, in the memo that I've presented. But trying to make it workable, practical and possible for my wife to take care of herself. As we, as we age. So I think that probably there are. People in the municipality that were, that are here today that don't have. To think of other people. In, in their homes to take care of it. So it would be easy for them to make a judgment that the practicality. Is, is something. Less than what it actually is. Alright. But at any rate, I think that the decisions that we've made thus far on this property have, have been smart ones. Except for maybe this one where I would have sort of led to believe that a variance was, was an easy accomplishment. And. Obviously, I, I, that was a mistake.
Um, so as you know, as I looked at the. The submission you've provided, I, I just want to, I just want to check this with you and make sure that I'm looking at this accurately, but. I didn't see anything. New there, there were four options, three of which the planning board had put forward at the last meeting. As possibilities that we saw on the property and we talked about those a little bit. And so there was the current location of the shed where you constructed it. And the other option that you're now talking about is to move it. Move it back maybe ten feet, is that right? So that, that's the fourth, the fourth option that you included in your analysis.
Right. And, and that was the option that was chosen by King's Arrow Company as well.
Chosen by them in, in what, in what way? They didn't see any other options or?
No, they did not. Joe did not see any other options. There are none. And when I. And I did point out the other options that the planning board had suggested. Could be, could work, but once he was here physically and looked at the location, he realized. He came to the same conclusion that I have in, in reviewing those locations.
What did he say specifically about moving the shed up to the parking area?
So moving the shed up to the parking area would prevent us from. Parking onsite and there would limit us to having to park in the road. Which really is not practical. In addition to that, in order to. Access any equipment that was kept in the shed. Would, would mean we'd, there would, it would be very difficult to bring a lawnmower down to the shoreline, we'll say. I don't think that. I don't think that anybody on this. Planning board would probably disagree if, if there was. A clear understanding as to what, where that location is.
The greatest that's in it is.
And the stairs.
There's stair, there's rock stairs and crushed gravel that. That it would be impossible to get anything with wheels down that area. The only option. I don't even know, there wouldn't be safely something that would allow you to be able to get any. So we would still be stuck with trying to figure out. Where to store the lawn equipment that would be safe from anything going into, you know, any fluids going into the water. Which. Is a concern.
So just one more question, then I want to open it up to planning board members generally for discussion, but. My, my last question for, for you is that. It appears that, you know, the shed as it's presently located, this, this new option, moving it back by ten feet or so. Just happens to bring it directly into line with the setback from the principal structure.
That's right.
And that was purely coincidental?
Well, and, and it's, it's even. No, well, that's what we were aiming for. And even with that location, there would be a scalloping or excavation of. Of the property that would be required. So to push it back even two more feet would, could potentially. Impact the root structure of surrounding trees. Which this particular location could also, so I'm not ruling that out. But also the. The impact to carving out or scalloping out the hill would. Could substantially impact the path that we have to accessing our, our structure. Which is something that I won't know until the spot is. Is created to move it back to ten feet. But that would leave the most minimal amount of impact to, to their runoff plan and to the erosion control. That we have in place now.
Okay. So you're saying that those potential problems with runoff and root structure and so forth. In theory would be exacerbated by moving it back. Any further.
It's possible that even moving it to ten feet could impact that.
Okay, planning board members may open it up for. Discussion at this point.
This is Jack. On the diagram that shows the four different options, the site plan. There's a sort of dash line from the parking lot down to the principal structure. Is that the walkway that you refer to?
That is the walkway, yep.
And. Why is the. I, the existing shed is eight feet. From the sideline, it looks like. But the number one, the first, the option that you're talking about here, it doesn't show what the distance is from the sideline.
It would be further. I don't know what that is, but it would probably be maybe ten feet.
Because it's supposed to be twenty.
I understand.
And wondering why twenty wouldn't work.
Again, there's, there's no. Clear vision that the planning board has about this, these locations because nobody's come out to take a look. It's not going to work. And if nobody's going to come out, then I guess my word has to be taken.
Well, we could, I mean, I, I agree with you that a site visit would probably be the best thing, but. This time of year isn't a good time for a site visit, so we could postpone everything and do a site visit when the ground is clear. And we'd have a much better view of things.
The site visit was. Should have been planned or was expected to be planned in December prior to all the snow, which never happened. So I feel like maybe we're being penalized for. Not follow, the, the unfollow through, if that's even a word.
I, I don't think there's any penalty at play here. I think that, you know, it, it was, it was a practical matter. This. This application came to us under rather unusual circumstances. It was after the fact. And, you know, I think from a practical perspective, the planning board was trying to deal with the timing in the best way that we could at the time. There were limitations on our time then and our ability to schedule site visits. Had nothing to do with penalizing you for any reason.
The other question I have is the slope, it says it's twenty six percent slope. But it's a little bit unclear to me, is the slope. Steeper as you go further towards the road? I mean.
As you, it's steeper further away from the road. So from about a parking area down to the proposed location is, is the steepest. Portion.
I was just wondering about why, following up on Paul's question about. Why this option is at eighty seven feet and not a hundred feet back? What? I mean, it's hard to tell from this diagram.
Right? So I guess maybe this needs to be tabled for a site visit. I've, I've tried to explain it to, to multiple occasions.
Well, you wouldn't, um, I mean, I'm assuming you wouldn't be able to do. Anything with regard to moving the structure. Until spring at this point.
No, but you know, the, the emotional. Toll that it's taken on us to have to worry and concern and the loss of sleep and the anxiety. Of being able to try to make this property work for us. It, you know, it was, it's a lot in the, in the winter when season, seasonal depression is at its highest peak. This is one less thing that I need to take on for baggage at the moment. So, you know, if. A decision could be made, that would be incredible.
Other, other board members?
It was helpful for me and the recommendations of the, what's the expert's letter, King's?
King's Arrow.
Yeah, their letter under recommendations. And Jack, this goes to your question about the slope. Probably being greater as you go back to the road, but. They talk under the second paragraph, under recommendations that. Eighty seven feet from the high water line is the most practical extent barring major excavation and retaining wall construction at a high cost to the landowner. So which suggests to me that yes, if it were moved back further, you'd be getting into more issues with the slope. One thing I just wanted to point out that I think is getting lost a little bit here. Is that this isn't just a relocation, right? This is, it's an expansion of more than thirty percent. Yeah, which is problematic as well.
Expansion, the shed itself is an expansion of more than thirty percent, but the, it is within the land, land ordinance. Square footage allowable. Of eighty square feet.
Sure, if you just let me finish. I'm wondering if there was any discussion with. Your expert about relocation if it were to be. Brought in line with the size of the original structure.
There, there wasn't, and that was only because six by eight is. Probably, I, I guess not even worth having. I can't even put a, a lawnmower in there in a six by eight shed and make it usable. So. You know, that's the reason for the enlargement was so that it could be useful. And six by eight, just, I, I guess I, I would rather just get rid of it. Not have anything.
Thank you. Others?
This is Jack again. Do we know the total square footage within the seventy five to a hundred foot? Area of that, if you include the shed and the house?
Within the, I'm gonna do some math here, within the one hundred. Within the one hundred. I'm going to do some quick math here.
That should have been in the application.
So the house, I've got about five hundred and sixty square feet of house that are within the one hundred foot mark. So with the eighty square foot of shed, I'm up to six hundred and forty square feet.
How'd you come up with five hundred and something?
That's my house, the principal structure with times length.
So it's a portion of the house within a hundred feet and the rest of it is outside of a hundred?
Yes, that's right.
But we go by floor area, so it's two story?
No, it's one. Within the hundred square feet is one. Are you counting the foundation as well?
No.
Okay, so no. Within a hundred square feet, within a hundred feet from the water is one level.
I'm going back to Jan's point, the, the twenty, twenty six percent. He says the slope behind the shed is steep as much as twenty six percent grade in places. I don't, I don't know whether it levels off or what.
It levels off a little bit for our driveway. And for our leach field.
So just a, a question about your submission, King's, King's Arrow. Submitted the, the one page letter, the two page piece that went through all four options. Was something that you put together?
Oh, that was from King Zero as well. Is it pictures?
Uh, no, I'm, there, there is, well, the King's Arrow piece, I'm assuming. It's their letterhead, Roy Property accessory building. There is a, a brief letter on. It's a page and a paragraph.
That was probably from, that was me, probably a brief letter. King's Arrow had a four page submission to me.
Most, most of that, most of that is, is pictures and. I guess the map.
I would have given the map, the topographical map. And the. Going to guess is a two page letter that talks about. Options.
King's Arrow provided the pictures. He, he created, he took pictures with the proposal and added those to the end.
Yes.
Yeah, so those, those pictures were from him.
Yeah, and what, what I'm talking about is a, is a two page piece that specifically lists. Four options, option one, it says per, per King's Arrow, option two, three and four.
That was for me.
Okay, that was my question.
So tell me again why. Why it can't be located twenty feet from the sideline?
Because of the slope and the erosion control.
Why does it matter, this, why does a slope matter whether it's eight feet or ten feet or twenty feet from the sideline?
Well, we have to be able to access the shed. So the, because of this, with the slope. Of the property, there'd be, it would be over my head to the door standing on the. On the ground.
Are you talking twenty feet from the?
Yeah, and we have permission, we have permission to be within that twenty feet. From, from the abutters.
So we don't know how many feet you are from the abutters.
My, 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 our, the side of our house to the property line is thirty five feet.
Right, and the shed that you show option one, it doesn't say how many feet from the sideline.
One is greater than eight feet where it currently is, so it's going to be like ten feet.
Okay. And it couldn't be twenty feet?
No.
Isn't the slope the same whether you're at ten feet or twenty feet?
If I'm back, eh, eh, oh, if I'm back. That's going to be into the walkway. Ten feet, twenty feet will be into the walkway to access. The principal structure.
It's hard to tell. In this diagram.
At the end of, I think he took a picture of the walkway, there's probably covered my heads.
It's hard to get the sort of scale when you're not there, it's just.
Yeah.
It was dark, you could walk out with the camera.
I know.
So if you could, if you were able to reference photos two and three from. Two, three or four, let's go with photo four from. King's Arrow. That's probably the clearest picture that you'll see.
Some snow, but.
There's a little bit of snow there, but that's, if you can make that out, that's.
The shed would pretty much be in front of where the stairs are in that fourth picture that go into the house. So if you were to.
So if you can make heads or tails of that, I'm, I'm happy to explain what you're looking at.
The stairs are on the right side of the picture.
Stairs are on the right side.
And the edge of the house is the top right corner, I think.
And if you come down to the bottom step of, of those set of stairs, you go diagonally off to the left on a pathway. So to go to move the shed twenty feet from the property, the abutters property line, we're in that pathway in front of those stairs.
Now, understanding that. You know, I, I certainly heard what you just said, Mr. Roy, about it being. Stressful and wanting a determination as, as soon as possible. And I, I understand that and I appreciate it. I am feeling, and I'd like to hear from other board members about this, but I am. Feeling that Jack's suggestion of taking a look at the property and doing a site visit. Maybe the best for us and for you ultimately. In order to get this right and to, you know, to really understand. The lay of the land and the situation before we make a decision.
Okay, Paula, that was my sense as well, that I just, just listening and looking at this drawing, I just don't see how. We can act in, in. You know, the, the, the best manner in terms of the right outcome without having seen it. You know, the, the, the best manner in terms of the right outcome without having seen it.
Others have thoughts on that? Jack, I, it sounded like you were. You were certainly in favor of a.
Yeah.
Of a site visit.
Yeah, we should do one. We could do it in early April, probably be clear.
Um, you know, the other thing we could do in terms of timing is, is kind of leave it open-ended and not decide tonight. When we'll do it, but to see how the weather plays out. If we're, you know, without snow and things are conducive to a site visit. Later in March, potentially we could do it then or in April.
Realistically, this, this shed. Would, because of the conditions of the, the soil and the ground. We would have to wait for. The. The yard to solidify and dry up. It stays relatively wet and muddy for all of the spring. And so, you know, the work that would have to be involved to move this realistically probably won't be able to be done until June. So, you know, what, whatever, whatever it takes.
You know, I, I made the suggestion to do it as early as it makes sense to do it in direct response to your concern about. Doing it sooner rather than later and. And the. The stress that you mentioned it's causing for you. Otherwise, we could wait until later in the spring.
The sooner the better, really.
And we work from home, so we are here most of the time. So it's really not, not an issue as far as, I mean, we had stated that in November that anybody who wanted to come out. We were here, we didn't mind. I know, I recognize it didn't work for people to come, but. Yeah, it's still the same, we're, we're here.
And I, I think, you know, at this point, given what we know and what we don't know about the site, I think it would be helpful for us to. Do a site visit as a group, we don't always do that, when things are a little more clear-cut. Excuse me, either we wave site visits or we might just stop by individually to take a look at a property, but I think that we would benefit. From visiting this site collectively, so that we can all see and hear the same thing at the same time. So if you'd be willing to leave it, leave it open, we could. We could continue the hearing and see what weather conditions are like. A bit later in March, early April, and then reconnect with you about scheduling something.
That, that sounds fine.
Okay.
Paula, one thing is, I don't know if there's anybody here for the public hearing on this that hasn't spoken.
Is, is there anyone in the meeting who would like to comment on this application or has questions about it? Hearing none. So if board members are amenable to that approach. We should, there should be a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing so we can schedule a site visit.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. We'll call for a vote, Don?
Yes.
Jan? Yes, Henry?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. I'm, actually, George, is that George O'Connor?
Yes.
Oh, hi, hi, I didn't think you were going to be here.
Yeah, I'm here.
So you were, you were here for that, that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to vote on the motion?
I vote yes, and I agree with you, Paula, that a group visit makes the most sense, because we all have, I think, different. Opinions on, on everything, probably, so I think collectively makes the most sense.
Okay, thank you, George, my, my apologies for overlooking you, I had understood you weren't going to be with us, so. And Paula, yes. Okay, so for the Roy's, thank you very much for. Spending the time talking about this tonight, we appreciate it. And we'll see how things go in March, and we'll get back to you about, you know, an appropriate time to come out and take a look at the site.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. We have a second application on the agenda tonight, and this is. Constance Fortini. And is she, oh, yes, there you are, I saw your name up earlier, the Fortinis. Welcome. This application is for the construction of a foundation under an existing non-conforming structure. That is about, as I recall, about thirty-some odd feet from the lake, from Miranda Cook. And. Um, tonight, our purpose is to look at the application for completeness. And if we find it complete, then we would schedule it for a public hearing and, and proceed with the process. But tonight specifically is a look at the application and a vote on whether it is, it is complete. And just for everyone's. Reference, the section that we're looking to in the ordinance is Article Three. Section four B, which concerns foundations under existing non-conforming structures. And as a starting point. It would be helpful for either of you to provide a summary of what your project is and any relevant points that you want to make about the application.
Okay, I'm not used to Zoom. Alright, so summary is, we bought this house in August. And it's a seasonal camp. And we were hoping to be able to use it year-round, and. That, you know, we've been advised the best way to do that would be to put a foundation under it, keep pipes from freezing. And keep heat in, that type of thing, and so. Our, our proposal, our request is just to put such a foundation underneath the camp. There's also a deck that protrudes out closer to the water than the camp. And we don't recommend, you know, we're not suggesting to put any kind of foundation underneath the deck, just under the main house. And that's.
Twenty-eight by twenty-eight foot.
Yep, that's a footprint of the house. And that's, that's it really, except I will say that. You know, we looked at trying to move the house away from the lake. So we could put the foundation farther away from the lake. If we move it in the direction that moves it farthest away from the lake, it runs right into the septic holding tank. That is actually, probably doesn't matter, but it is brand-new, when we bought the house, part of the state. Has to inspect the septic and it failed, and so a new. If I'm using the right term, like holding tank and leach field was put in, and of course, we didn't know any better. And it's right where it was, and so. It's within feet of the house in the direction.
Yes, the tank itself is four and a half feet away from the house.
So.
The pylons in the house.
Yeah. Anyways, that's, that's it in a nutshell, that's it in a nutshell, we tried to follow all the permit questions as best as we could, but we're really. Not used to doing this kind of thing, so we'll see if we've got everything that we need.
So just, just to be sure, I understand clearly, the application is strictly for a foundation. Under this seasonal house. It's not a conversion, a seasonal conversion ship. So your, your request is, is, is not to convert a seasonal structure to a year-round structure.
Um, no.
Tony, they're asking if you want to make it your full-time residence.
Oh, no.
No, not a full-time residence, no.
We live in New Hampshire. Live, work, and our, our children are here, but we would love to visit there on, in the winter, on weekends and that kind of thing. But no, not full-time.
Um, so, part of the, the requirement for the foundation, you mentioned that you had looked at. Relocating the structure, because part of the requirement is that you. Evaluate whether or not the structure could be moved. In order to meet setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. So your evaluation indicates that the leach field and, and the septic tank are the. The limiting factors in that, there is, there is no other. Direction or option for movement of the house.
Right, and it's not really the leach field, I think that's farther away, it's the, the holding tank portion that's right there. Right near the house. Within feet.
I have a question, which you answered in your subsequent filing, I asked about how high the foundation would be, and you said five feet, I think.
We don't need to have a full basement under there to achieve what we're trying to achieve, so if that makes a difference, we'll be happy to keep it shorter.
Okay. There is, Paula raised the issue of the seasonal conversion. And it does, it does seem like it fits in the definition of a seasonal conversion, because. You're converting the seasonal dwelling unit into something that's habitable for year-round occupancy, not that you will be there. But it will be habitable for year-round occupancy. And so I think that there's a permit that you need to get from the code enforcement officer. To show that you're in compliance with the wastewater disposal rules and other rules.
Oh, I, I, I think, I think too, Jack, that the, I mean, a straight seasonal conversion, I think. Requires. A. Change of use approval. For dwellings in the Shoreland Residential District, which are non-conforming due to setbacks from any water body. Site review approval for change of use is required from the planning board. That's in D. D two.
Oh, I see.
No, it does, it does require the. You know, the wastewater disposal piece, but you know, if it truly is a seasonal conversion. That does need to be approved as a change of use.
Okay, I jotted those two things down.
So with the, with the foundation underneath, you know, I, I don't think we know, we don't know. All there is to know about this, about this camp, obviously. Does, does that? Does that make it usable year-round? Could, could someone, could someone live there all year? I guess that's the question.
With just the foundation?
With just the, we had planned on running the water. The, the answer, short answer would be yes.
Wait, wait, are we on mute?
No, you're fine.
Are you installing a heating system too, in the basement?
Okay. Um, so if you just added the basement, I don't think you could live there year-round. Because the water was pulled from the lake.
Right, so to live there year-round, we would also need a, a well, drilled.
Okay. Are you installing a heating system?
The heating system, when we bought it, was just a wood stove, we had a heat pump installed in December.
Good.
So there's actually, there's no, there's no propane oil, no fossil fuel heating.
Electric heat pump.
Just electric heat pump, huh?
Wouldn't it make sense to do the seasonal conversion now, get the permit now? As long as you're going through this, I mean, it's not. I, I forget, is it a separate process, Paula, or is it the same application, just? Adding this in?
Well, I mean, I think you could combine them, but for a seasonal conversion, I think the. Review is, is a bit more comprehensive, because it requires site review as a change of use. It's not just strictly, you know, adding the foundation to a non-conforming structure. Well, no, actually, go ahead, Henry.
Yeah, I, I guess I. If, I think that's the important part there, is, is this a change of use? And. And, and just for efficiency reasons with the applicant, if it should be, should be considered at this time or not. I, I'm not hearing a change of use, and I'm just trying to look through the ordinance now to see sort of where that may be triggered, but. I mean, I, I don't think it's a change of use, I think they're just adding a. Basement, but I can see that in the future, it may be, it may be beneficial for the applicant to go through that at this time. If you ever had envisioned using it. More.
I mean, I guess we're just going on your guidance, we didn't even think about seasonal conversion. If, if we need to go through a permit process for that, we will do it. You know, I guess I really am not knowledgeable on what that means. It's probably has nothing to do with our intention of whether we're going to live there year-round, which we aren't. But if by making these changes, it's defined as a seasonal conversion. Then we'll look into that permit and add to this package if you advise us to. Or however, if you could give us guidance on that, we'll follow it.
Jack, where's the basement section in the, I just can't find it.
The foundation piece?
Yeah, sorry, the, yeah.
It's Article, section four, B.
Page eight.
Page eight.
Yep.
Also in the definition section, definition of a basement.
Are you looking for the figure that's showing the structure on the pylons? Figure five?
I think they're looking at the actual, their own ordinances.
Well, if you read B, Jack and Paul, it's pretty clear.
That's clear.
On page eight, section.
Yeah, I know, that's what we've been looking at, I mean.
Yeah, but it's very clear that it needs site review, needs setback requirements, needs, has height requirements.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. But the question has become, if in addition to that, what we're talking about is seasonal. But the question has become, if in addition to that, what we're talking about is seasonal conversion, which is a separate section.
That's page one oh eight.
Cause it's, obviously, I'm having a slow night.
I think, you know, they added the heat pump, they're adding the basement. There'll probably be insulating pipes and adding insulation and stuff. They just put in a new wastewater disposal system. It seems like they're converting it to potential year-round use. And I don't see the downside to them of getting a permit now for that. I mean, it's a little bit more paperwork. But I mean, it's up, and, you know, they're asking us for our, our guidance, though, whether they should do it. Just seems like getting it over with now makes sense, but doesn't seem like it's more.
Yeah, I'm reading that now. I agree with that. I would, I would say that is good guidance because, um, otherwise, they're just gonna have to come back and do it all over again.
Yeah.
Might as well do it all at once.
And they just had a new wastewater disposal system put in, so it's probably in compliance with the rules.
Yeah, I think it, it's very clear that it says whole or in part, but not limited to, and it specifically calls out those things that you mentioned.
So Jack, you said one oh eight, but on my copy, it's section twenty-seven, page one oh three.
Yeah, I know, my pages are all messed up, but it's section twenty-seven.
Section twenty-seven.
In article, article eight.
Yep. Article eight, section twenty-seven. Subsection.
Yeah, it's also the last, last sentence where it says, it's dependent on the development activity, right? Not the actual use.
Right.
Right, it's on the activity, yep. So the activity being the installation of a heating, a new heating source, upgrading a new heating source quote, which it says.
And they've done it all except for the electrical and the well, everything that's listed.
Yep, replace and expand or expand a wastewater disposal, yeah, great.
So, Chip, could you, um, could you work with them to amend their application?
It should be fairly simple. Um, we didn't do that in the first place, because when they came to me, they were certainly talking about mostly a summer camp where they might visit occasionally during the winter. So we did not consider that to be a conversion. They don't have a well. The heat pumps certainly will not work year-round. You know, I think any of us that have them know when it gets down below twenty degrees, they're not sufficient in themselves. So, I mean, yes, this will increase the value of their property. This will, um, you know, probably be a good idea to do financially. Um, but that's the reason that they didn't come originally with this. We could easily amend this for the next meeting and, uh, have that come to you, because I believe everything's been covered here.
Is, is that how you would like to proceed? Um, I think you've heard, you know, playing board members' thoughts on approaching it this way, but obviously, it's, you know, it's, it's up to you how you want to approach it, but if you do look at that piece, um, it, you know, it is pretty clear that there has been development activity that renders the structure habitable for year-round occupancy or will when you make those improvements.
I have two questions. Um, one, we, we were hoping to get the foundation approval um, relatively soon, only so we could potentially get the contractors, uh, still he would have availability this year, because things are pretty booked up there. Um, would the seasonal conversion permit slow down the process in a big way if we did it together?
I'm not anticipating that it would. Others can weigh in, but it doesn't strike me as being, um, a difference that would slow it down considerably. It might slow it down by one meeting, potentially. Now, if you amended the application and brought it back to us, we could look at it again for completeness for both the foundation piece and the seasonal conversion piece. And then, um, our typical practice would be, if we find it complete, we would schedule it for public hearing and and likely a decision.
Okay, um, and then I guess my other question is, and you know, I really need to look at the sections and the articles. Um, if this is defined as a seasonal conversion, then, um, there's really no choice. This is how we'd have to proceed, because by definition, that's what it, what it is, right?
Um, yes, I think you can make the argument that this is a seasonal conversion. I mean, obviously, there are other things that you could do, you know, to make it more habitable, you know, year-round, but, um, I think that all of these things that we've been talking about, you know, fall within the scope of what's being discussed in the seasonal conversion section. So if you want to look at that, I think it would be useful to you, and, um, that's, um, article eight in our land use ordinance, uh, section twenty-seven.
Okay, good.
It does look like, um, that you have to have a stormwater and erosion control implementation and maintenance plan. Which somebody would have to do.
Jack, I believe that's already been done for this application, and it could be easily modified for the future edition.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I, there's some language in there. I was just glancing at the current application just to see, I think it's fair, since there, since we're here tonight, just to look at that, to see how it see if there's anything majorly missing.
We would appreciate that.
So I guess you could work with the code enforcement officer in getting everything together for the seasonal conversion part of the application. We could deal with it at the next meeting.
So, that, that, Chip, erosion control and stormwater was addressed?
I believe so. It had to be. If you're raising that, uh, foundation so close to the water, I think Mr. Bellevance provided that.
Yeah.
Connie, am I mistaken?
I think he provided some illustrations and everything.
A sketch.
Yeah.
We could expand on that, but I believe that, you know, they've come with an application forty-three pages long, and they managed to get their floodplain certificate over the weekend. Um, I think they've, uh, really satisfied much of this, and we could, uh, you know, go into even more if needed. We'll look into the, uh, expanding the erosion control.
Yeah, I mean, what they have is just a little diagram with a silk fence, but I don't think that counts as.
I believe, I believe we demanded silt fence, um, hay and erosion control mulch, and that was agreed to, so we could get that further clarified.
Yeah, they would have the stormwater management.
Yep.
And it looks like that, so you're using a DEP certified contractor, um, you know, which would ensure that they would be following the appropriate erosion control measures. Um, I, I do have a question. I'm looking at the the sketch of the house on the lot with the driveway and all, um, this, the one with the red line, which is that the one hundred-foot setback line?
The one with the red line, I think, is our sketch.
Right.
Um, and that map came with a red line. Chuck, you, I mean, Chip, I think you provided that map with the red line, and I'm not really sure.
I think mine's in black and white, but if I'm looking at the same one, um, it runs across the middle of the lot.
Yeah, um, through part of the leach field.
Yeah. By the shed.
I believe that was used for scaling. So if that's a hundred and forty-eight feet.
Oh, it might have been.
Yeah, at one point, it was used for scaling, um, the lots, um, position of the structures on a lot and everything.
That's the one we gave me, the measurements from the, uh, porch and the house and
Correct.
everything else, yeah.
Okay, so, so is that an accessory structure that's above the line to the right of the driveway? Is one, two, three, four?
It's a twelve-by-fourteen shed.
Okay, and then the, the other thing, because, you know, we always have to go through this exercise of, you know, is there a place that's in conformance where you can move the structure, and you've got and sort of a blank white area on the left side of the driveway as I look at the sketch, so you know, I, I'm guessing there's, there's probably something there, but, um,
Um, it's, it's heavily wooded, and then, um, if you look just, um, straight up on the sheet, you'll see, um, you'll start infringing on the power lines going through the lot.
The flood zone survey engineer put on the map. But, um, be a giant move.
Is that that other line that's on the, that same sketch, sort of about
Oh.
core of the way down the driveway?
That line.
Um.
It's hard to see on this draw.
You know, the best map
Yeah.
from the, we, we just got over the weekend, came from the ES Coffin Engineering Services. And it was part of the floodplain piece. It was just, um,
He mailed it today or yesterday?
Um, I think I, I gave it to Chip yesterday morning.
It was mailed to all of you.
That's the one, yep.
Yeah, that's, he actually, you know, he's a professional, he did a much better job.
Right.
So that
I like your, I like your drawing still, though, by the way.
I liked it too.
So, I'm just, I'm not showing the wooded areas.
It wasn't easy, let me tell you.
You see, oh, yeah, there, there's the power line. I see what you're talking, yeah, so that's what I was, I think it is actually the same.
Yeah.
He didn't put in the, um, the holding tank, because it probably wasn't marked off.
But the, the, he's showing the wooded areas, they're, they're white pines that are eighty to a hundred feet tall. And, you know, it's quite a grove. There'd be a lot of, lot of, lot of trees taken down if we moved it there.
I have to say that, that, that kind of a move, we'd have to get someone else, because this man can only move it fifteen feet in one direction. This Ron Bellevance. But that's not your problem either.
So, so most of that area is, is occupied by these pines, by the pine grove? Is that correct?
It, it's pretty much everywhere you see wooded, it's, um, they're giant white pines. All except down near the shoreline, there's a few, but.
Well, we can, we can talk about that, that piece further, um, as well, when, you know, when you come back with the rest of it, but just for, for your reference, um, the piece having to do with foundations in the non-conforming structure chapter, um, what this relates to is that we need to make, um, a finding that the setback requirements have then met to the greatest practical extent because it is a non-conforming structure. And because of its proximity to the lake. And for that reason, uh, we need to go through that exercise of whether or not it could be relocated. Uh, maybe the answer is no. Um, um, but, you know, things like, uh, the location of the septic system, the leach field. Um, you know, certainly things like, um, giant pine trees could be a reason not to move it. Power lines, you know, those are the kinds of things that we would, we would look at. But nevertheless, it's still, you know, as, as Don mentioned, an exercise that we, uh, we do need to go through. So if you, um, you know, take a look at that section and, uh, think about it from that perspective, and then you know, we can discuss it again when you come back with the revised application.
Okay.
Uh, planning board members, any, anything else on, on this, uh, that you want to raise at this point? Okay, if not, um, um, thank you very much, uh, for talking with us tonight. Um, get together with Chip and, uh, talk with him about making some revisions onto your application, and, uh, we can get it scheduled to bring back to us, and, um, we'll take a look at it, uh, from the perspectives of both the, uh, the foundation piece and the seasonal conversion piece.
We're not gonna do completeness tonight.
Well, I mean, if what we're doing is turning this into a, a, an application that addresses both of those areas, I, I don't think that we can.
Okay.
Um, you know, uh, looking at it originally, just from the foundation perspective, I think we were prepared to do a completeness application, but um, I think it takes another look if we're gonna add seasonal conversion onto it as well.
Good.
So, uh, do you have any other, any other questions for us? Um,
Not at the moment. Are you snowing yet?
Pretty much. Connie, give me a call in the morning, and we'll go over some of the things that we heard tonight and see what we can get to complete. I don't believe it's gonna be a great task.
Okay.
Right?
Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and your good advice.
Right.
And thank you, Chip, for your help up to this point, and, um, we'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good night.
There, if I may make a comment here, Paula?
Sure.
First of all, that was much more refreshing than the first one, um, but I think we might be running ourselves into a problem here if we're gonna judge, um, seasonal conversions based on septic tanks being replaced. We passed a, uh, you know, an ordinance back earlier last year requiring pretty much codifying the state ordinance that everybody had to get their septic tanks uh, inspected, which has resulted in quite a few replacements. I think by taking this tact of, and that's pretty much the major, major step in conversion, by taking this tact and suggesting that people do take this, um, you know, seasonal conversion, we're encouraging people to turn their houses into year-round houses. And these houses we're talking about are very close to the shore, on very small lots. I'm a little bit afraid to see this tact taken and to encourage this type of movement. I think this is something you should discuss among yourselves. But we are gonna see more septic tanks replaced. I know we have a lot of steel tanks out there. And when those tanks are replaced, we're gonna have these houses sold. And if they're being sold as a year-round residence, we're gonna have expansions and development, and so I'd ask you to reconsider or think about the ramifications of encouraging a seasonal conversion. Um, because the tank or whatever was replaced, um.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't, this Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't, this, this was not strictly. A, a tank replacement, I mean, that was, that was one thing that happened, but. Um, they're putting a foundation under a seasonal structure, that's number two, they've installed a heat pump. Um. So.
Ready to do for air conditioning, don't forget.
Well, it, you know, it, it looked like there were several things and, I mean, the reason I raised the issue in the first place was that. Um, after, well, and she had also made the comment that they, um, the real reason I, I raised it was that there were a number of things, improvements that they had made. And she also, in the application and verbally tonight, made a comment about wanting to be able to spend, um. To live there in the winter, I don't remember exactly what the words were.
No, it wasn't live, it was visit in the winter.
Well, that's not what the application said.
Yeah.
Like many, many resident, um, seasonal houses are used in this town, many of them.
No, I, I, I get that, but whatever she said in the application raised that issue in my mind.
I get, I just asked for conversation to think, I think it's pushing, uh, people to, uh, push towards seasonal conversions to, you know, year-round. That does improve the, uh, property's value and does allow for the thought of. Keeping more people in town year-round on properties that really aren't suited for it. Just my opinion, I'll leave it at that.
That's a good comment, Chip. I think it's a good comment, I'm glad you brought it up, um. Yeah, I mean, I think in this case, there's. A couple, you know, the foundation thing here is really sort of the, the trigger, right, for the, just the initial thought process, but yeah, I don't, I don't think we'd wanna go down the rabbit hole that you're suggesting, I don't think, I, I mean, I think that is a. Interesting. Interesting concept.
You know, I also could foresee a situation where. You know, I thought it was important to raise the issue also from the point of view that. You know, if at some point in the future, it was decided that enough improvements had been made. That it met the threshold for a seasonal conversion, um, you know, it is better to talk about it now and get it on the table than. Not to. Um.
In, in their case, Paula and Chip, it, it, it was, um, it was very clear in the application that the reason they were doing this was for. Allowing for year-round slash four-season use, I mean, that's. That was their rationale for.
That's what I recall.
That's what it says in the application, so, I mean, that's, that's the rationale, as opposed to Chip say the situation that you're discussing, which may just be somebody. For state, for state statute, changing the, you know, updating the septic system. Which I don't think is, I, I hear a caution because it does say that, so I mean, there is probably maybe something in the L U O, we could. Clarify that language for yet another revision in the future, but, uh, but I think it's not, I don't think it's quite the same trigger. Good point, though.
Now, speaking of the L U O, um. Um, you all received, I believe from, um, Jack had sent out the most recent version of the revisions that we've been working on. And, um, our purpose in putting it on the agenda tonight was just to give everyone. Um, one last, you know, opportunity to, um, to comment on any of this. And if it would be helpful, we can. Run through the changes again and, um. And summarize those, if it would be probably the biggest change from last time is that we had had a. A general discussion, I think Jan, you had raised the issue initially of. Um, the section on nonconforming structures and how it would be. Uh, clearer if it was reorganized in some way. And so that is one of the things, um, that we put forward in the new draft. Um, is a reorganization that really puts the expansion piece at the end rather than right up front, which, um. Sends the message that there are a number of different actions and activities that go on with nonconforming structures. Expansions is one of those things. But by changing the order of those, of those sections that. It, um, I think it makes it easier to read and is a little bit clearer with regard, regard to what the process might look like. So all of the, all of the pieces, um. Beginning with relocation. And then on to reconstruction or replacement. Foundations. Height. On all of those things bring in the concept of the greatest practical extent. So the greatest practical extent section follows all of those. And then. Finally, um, expansions, um. Have been ordered, uh, to come last in that, in that series. Um, because an expansion theoretically, uh, can be proposed to a relocated, a reconstructed. Structure. And so the order, um, you know, is, is intended to, um, to bring some clarity, basically, there are no. No big changes, uh, to the language, uh, there are a few things that have been, that have been added, um. But primarily for the purpose of, of clarity. Jack, did you wanna add anything about that section?
No, I think it's fine, I don't think anything really major changed except it was reorganized and clarified, but. I did wanna point out that I dropped the whole issue of parking spaces. And maybe we'll deal with that when we have to deal with, um, ADUs. And also I dropped the provision about, um. Notice to abutters when the CEO makes a decision because. Ninety-nine percent of the time, there's not gonna be anything that really. Impacts abutters and it just seemed like goes adding another bureaucratic step that. I, I'm not sure it was worth it.
Yeah, I'd push back on you on that, I'd really, I liked that idea. I think maybe if it could be reined in in terms of the magnitude and how it affects neighbors. If we could figure out a way to do that, I would totally be in favor of. Asking abutters, I think it'd be a real wise thing in light of some of the things I've run into in the last few months. And, uh, I don't think it's a burden to me, I don't think it's a burden to somebody that's doing this, if we can define. Who this, uh, you know, the type of situation that it would apply to.
Yeah, that was hard, I mean, cause you did. Single-family residences and accessory buildings and. Um. Home occupations. Like it's, and with home occupations, they really get a permit. That's a renewable permit. So anyone who's upset about. A home occupation can intervene in that annual renewal process and.
Again, if we could rein it in with a definition that would work, I believe.
You would. I mean, what, what situations are you thinking of?
I could take a shot at it this week, um, I'm thinking of situations where. It's nonconforming because it's pre-existing too close to a house nearby. Um, I, it might be because there's, uh, you know. A situation where there's been issues before, I think a lot of it has to do with what's pre-existing nonconforming and how it might. Further exacerbate a problem with neighbors and things like that. So I, again, I, I was. I liked the idea you had and I thought that it would make sense and it wouldn't be too much of a burden on myself. Cause we don't often get, uh, those type of applications, but when we do. I'm working with one right now, we have to move back and take a look at it and see, uh. If everybody agrees on it, so, um. Again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that one in the trash at this point.
But, I mean, uh, the situation that you're talking about is, you know, I, I gave that some thought and it's really difficult. Well, I've given it a lot of thought, but.
Yeah, we all have.
That situation is really difficult to define in broader generic terms. Uh, to say that, you know, this kind of application, uh, is always going to be noticed. You know, I went first to the table of uses to try to. Uh, figure out if there was a way that you could identify on the table of uses, which ones would be important and. You can't, um, you, you, you can't, and it, it's much more subjective than that. And it just got, in my mind anyway, it got really messy and confused, I, I wouldn't. I wouldn't know how to do it and.
But again, if you relied on the judgment of the code officer who is, got the power and the latitude. To issue those type of permits, knowing that it is a challenged property with challenged issues with neighbors. Uh, due to, again, maybe a house on a nonconforming lot. Or again, that's nonconforming because it was built a hundred years ago close to another house. I think that would be a good one, um, but again, if you're not interested, that's fine, if you wanna work with me, Jack, I'll work with you on it.
Well, the other issue is that we need to get this package to hearing and we don't have a lot of time to fool around with it if we're gonna get it done on time, so.
Okay.
That's the practical consideration. Um.
So I, my two cents, I like the concept certainly, but leaving it to. Of anyone's discretion, I think is, is dangerous and opens people up to potential criticism or worse. Um, and I, I think that it, it's gonna involve a much larger, more detailed discussion than what we have time for at this point.
I mean, we could, we could bring it back for conversation and, you know. For perhaps the next time around, I mean, we could have more discussion about it, but. Um. You know, I, I agree with Jan, it, it may, without being able to define. Clearly what circumstances would trigger this kind of notice, um. I'm, I'm generally uncomfortable with it and. As I said, I tried to come up with something and I, I was coming up dry because everything that I looked at in the table of uses. Did not address this situation that, you know, we're kind of using as an example here.
Yeah, I mean, like home occupations is pretty cut and dry, I think that's one that should absolutely be noticed. And again, that arises from my own personal experience, um, long ago, um. But again, I, yeah, I think it's gonna take a, a lot more thought and a lot more coming through.
Jack, what do you wanna do about this?
Um, I'm fine with just leaving it as is, you know, not, not dealing with it now.
Okay, let's move ahead without it this time, but it's something that we can come back to, I mean, it sounds like there's interest in it. I think it's just a matter of. Figuring out how to define it clearly enough so that we don't run into a bunch of.
I would say though that. You know, decisions of the code enforcement officers are that, well, never mind, skip it. Never mind. I was, I was thinking that. No, never mind, never mind, sorry. I did wanna mention another.
It's a dangerous open-ended statement.
Yeah.
The decisions of the code enforcement officer are, never mind.
Well, I was, I was thinking that they get appealed to the Board of Appeals.
Perfect, is that the word you're looking to say, perfect?
Um, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I hear.
I wonder though whether people who are abutters who aren't noticed. And a building permit or whatever is issued to somebody. And the abutters don't have notice, so they. There's no time limit on them to appeal. I guess, I don't know what the answer to that is, if you gave them notice with, it's set forth. That you only have thirty days to appeal, forty-five days to appeals in a butter. Then they would, their rights would extinguish, but if they don't ever get notice. I guess the appeals board is gonna be dealing with that maybe in this Batora situation that's come up. Now, what is the. Appeal period for someone who doesn't have notice. But anyway, we can skip it for this go-around. I did wanna point out that, um, we talked about screening, uh, warehouses and other storage areas and, um. I think Don brought up, you know, an example of where it may not be appropriate and we do have in our. In our site review criteria, we have a waiver provision. That applies to all the standards that we use and Paul and I looked at it and thought that the waiver provision. In the site review criteria could apply to. This section, it does apply to this section that we're rewarding with the screening of storage areas, so somebody would it be able to show that. Screening it. Like that, the place that Don mentioned on Route seventeen, screening with trees and stuff probably wouldn't be appropriate there. So somebody could ask for a waiver, but the general standard would be that you screen it unless you get a waiver.
So, I, I, I mean, initially the, the concept was to include. Something in, in the storage section itself that indicated that in certain circumstances, perhaps you wouldn't need to do the screening. And I kept thinking that there was some language somewhere in the ordinance that. We could pull and put into the storage section, uh, that would accomplish that. And when I went back and looked at it, what I'd been thinking of was that waiver provision. Um, but as Jack just described, the waiver provision already exists. And theoretically, it applies to any standard, uh, in the, in the ordinance. So someone could come forward and ask for a waiver of that standard. Um, under the criteria that are in the waiver standard. So it became simpler, I mean, you just referenced the waiver piece rather than doing a specific waiver provision for that one.
There's nothing else really. Nothing else changed, we have the provision that Chip wanted about the docs. And about electronic submission of the application. That was basically it.
So any other thoughts about. Coordinates?
But Paula, can you. Refresh one more time the anticipated schedule for moving this forward?
Yeah, um, I, I, um, I had a conversation, uh, with Eric last week about the schedule for town meeting. And, uh, getting warrant articles together and, and things before the select board. And, um, the limiting factor for us is holding a hearing because we need, the planning board needs to hold its hearing on these. Ordinance changes and the required notice, um, um. The notice in the town office is, is thirteen days prior to the hearing. The first newspaper notice is twelve days prior to the hearing, um, Chip checked, um. The advertiser, because they only publish on Saturdays, um. Uh, you know, it takes more time to get it in, if we want to do a hearing. For the fourteenth of March, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, we have time to do that, um, if Chip gets the. Notice to the KJ. Um, tomorrow, basically. Yup. And so that is doable, um. Um, and that would provide, uh, that would get the notice in, uh, to meet the twelve days. And, um, and the thirteen days notice and the town office and the post office and so forth. So, um. If we held a hearing on the fourteenth of April. If that hearing resulted in any changes that we wanted to make to the language of the ordinance, we would have plenty of time to do that. Um, the absolute outside date for getting materials to the select board. Uh, for warrant articles is. The tenth of April, but, um, I think it's doable before that, which would be preferable. So, um, if there were any changes that were necessary, we could ma- make those. You know, shortly after the meeting on the fourteenth and, um. Get that package to Eric and the select board as soon as possible after then. Chip?
Yeah, if I may, um, I don't know if it's gonna take it on this revision or whatever. One of the things I've noticed is we can absolutely do that, um. They're almost right, and anytime they'll give us the next day insertion. But there's been a few, um, applications, um, hearings we've had. That have run quite a bit of money because we've had to go to the KJ. Quite a bit of money because we have to do printing, this, this and that. I'd like to see a simple addition to the cost of an application to include all. All notifications, mailings and associate, make it wide, associated needs for the meeting. Our application fee is a hundred dollars. That's wiped out almost immediately with simple things. When we have to go to the K, KJ where it costs a hundred twenty-five, two hundred dollars for insertion. That really runs in the red. So if there's a simple way, just to add a few words to our, um. Application fee, what it covers, it already covers mailings, I believe, but we need to expand that. I've already.
I mean, we went, we went to, um, using. Generally, we use the advertiser because that, that fee is not associated with the advertiser.
They're going away.
And so, um, you know, if they're going away, maybe we need to make that, that adjustment. I'm not sure of the locations in which that adjustment needs to be made, so we'd have to talk about that.
It'd be a simple word in, you know, what's required, I mean.
It, it, what's required in what? Is it in the ordinance?
For an application, they are responsible for, say, for example, printing. For, for example, a, any consultants that we require. I'm just asking for something that broadens it to allow the cost for. That comes along associated with a meeting.
I, I understand what you want to broaden it to, but the it is what? Is that in the ordinance or in the application form or both?
It's, it would be an edit on the application form.
Is that the only location?
It's not in the ordinance.
Okay, and, um, I guess I would want to. I think it's something that if it's not in the ordinance, I think we'd need to. By Eric and make sure that, I mean, because it is a fee that the town is charging. It may be something that's the, the select board needs to approve. I don't know.
We're already doing that. We've, uh, we've put a schedule of new fees for. Everything that, uh, is included under my direction. Um, so this is something that could be added to that. I guess it doesn't need.
So it's not in that, that you gave them already?
No, it's not. And I was just passing that by you. But I don't believe it's in the ordinance. If you wanted, it could be, but make you aware of that. Sorry.
In, in the ordinance is the provision about consultants that we can hire consultants at the applicant's expense.
Right, right. So there is the opportunity to do it there. But we can also do it through the Board of Selectment in adjusting the fee schedule. Because that is outlined at the top of the fee schedule.
Okay. So, um. Did, did that answer your question, Don, about the schedule?
So we are shooting for the fourteenth?
Um, yeah, I think we, uh, I mean, that makes the most sense to me. Uh, you know, I wanna, I wanna hear from the rest of you, but we do have a regularly scheduled meeting on the fourteenth. I doubt very much that this hearing is going to take much time. As you know, we. We, we get few, uh, interested parties who typically comment on ordinance changes at hearings. So I, I don't think it will be a big time sink, um. And we couldn't.
I should mention too that, that I will be, I'm gonna be traveling on the fourteenth. And so I, I'm hoping I will be back, but I. I, there's just a lot of question marks as to whether I'll make it.
Okay. Um, how about everyone else? Do you expect at this point that you'll be available on the fourteenth?
Let me look.
April fourteenth or March fourteen?
March.
I'm available March fourteenth.
Okay.
I thought that I was, but I just looked and I have parent teacher conferences that night. But they end right at six thirty, so I couldn't make it. I just may be a little late.
Okay, uh, George, do you think you're available?
Uh, on March fourteenth, uh, yes, I am available.
Okay. All right, well, we'll hope that everyone can make it, but if you don't, it sounds like we have a quorum. So we'll, we'll proceed with the fourteenth, um. And hopefully everyone can be there.
Well, I'll draft that in the morning. Could you be available to check it over so I can get it in tomorrow?
Yes, yeah, I'm around. And, uh, Chip, the other, the other piece is that the typical posting locations of, of a notice of hearing. Like the town office and the post office and wherever else you usually do it. Um, that notice, uh, is the thirteen day notice. So that one, uh, that one needs to go out as well.
And Jack's gonna start the twenty twenty-four list.
Yeah, I think it's already started.
I think it's already started.
I'm on it.
Yeah, somebody better keep a running total.
So anything else about ordinance revisions, anyone? Everybody good with those? Okay. Um, just a brief word about the comp plan. Matt and I are planning to. Get together next week, uh, to go over. Our suggested revisions to the future land use chapter, and that's. Uh, the portion that, uh, that you saw some excerpts from and did a review on and that we discussed. And, um, uh. We're taking some of the ideas that we heard from you. Uh, some things that we've talked about, uh, you know, between the two of us. And are hoping to make some additions and some modifications. Uh, to that draft that KB Cog had produced some time ago now. There's been, um, there've been a couple more comprehensive plan committee meetings. And last Saturday, there was another in a series of public meetings at the town office. Inviting people in to make comment specifically about. Future land use and open space, which was, I must say, an interesting conversation. And, um. So, um, Matt and I are going to get together and do that. Um, we're going to be having some conversation in mid-March, um, with the full committee. And, uh, they are going to start working on revising the individual chapters. When there is a new draft with all of that input included, um, it will come back to you. Um, so that you can take a look at, um, at the draft. With the additions that have been made over, you know, over past, past weeks and months. Um, the process is a little bit different than I expected it to be. Um, there had not been a decision made, uh, early on about whether. The comp plan was going to go to town meeting in June or to special town meeting later in the year, like in October, November. And, um, I think that, um, you know, Matt and I were both thinking at a certain point that it was going to be later in the year. But it is on. Track at this point, uh, to take to town meeting in June. So any remaining work on it is going to be done over the next couple of months. So, um. That's really it. I just wanted to let you know generally where that was and what's been happening with that. There are more, uh, public meetings coming up, um, I think the next two Saturdays, um, there are. There are meetings inviting, uh, people in to, to talk in very broad terms. They're not commenting on the draft documents. They're talking, uh, more conceptually about, you know. Like the future land use and open space discussion was really, uh. Was a very open-ended conversation with people about their, their thoughts and their, their vision for. For land use and, uh, and open space in the, in town, so. That's really all I have on that.
Feels like a lot of material to incorporate before a June vote.
It, it, it is, and, you know, and I think what will happen as a result of that limited time is that. There are certain things that I thought there would be more time to, to develop more. Uh, and then put them into the, into the comp plan. You know, a good example, I think, is the. Um, uh, the idea that Don had about the, um. The impact fee. I mean, it's, it's somewhat different than a, you know, than a true impact fee, but. Um, as you'll recall, Don had made that suggestion and, uh, everyone, um, thought that that was a good idea and. You know, I thought, well, you know, that's something that we could develop further. Uh, and include it in the comp plan. I think that. As a result of the limited time, we may have something in there about it, but it will be. It won't be much detail. It'll be conceptual. It'll be broad. It might be, you know, rather than. You know, implement an impact fee that does blah, blah, blah. It will be. Um, you know, evaluate the possibility of imposing and. Uh, an impact fee that would do X, Y, and Z, you know. So I, I think it's going to lean more toward the conceptual as a result. Um, which, you know, it, it's, that's not a completely bad thing. I mean, the comp plan does a lot of that anyway. It's, it's conceptual. There's a lot of language that will be in there about. You know, taking a look at certain issues and figuring out what to do about them. Um, so the, you know, the, the main, the main purpose and the result is identifying the issue. And determining that, you know, it should be further examined, uh, to accomplish something.
I think that. I think you're right. I think, uh, that's a good example for, um, but I also think that the language should probably be. Very carefully worded, so it'll, it's sort of encourages. If, if it's determined that a particular conceptual, uh, idea is, is de, you know. Should be explored within this decade time that we have to do it. Um, if that should be something that is deemed appropriate, then, that, you know, it should say that it will be implemented or, you know, would be determined and. To be executed or implemented, you know, on all those, you know, in a generic sense and on, on all those things. Cause I don't want it to seem like it's just this pie in the sky, you know, we should have checklists and goals and.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have, if we can identify them, we should proceed with that. And I don't want somebody to go back to the comp plan and. You know, use it as a, use it in the opposite direction to what it's.
Right, right. So, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think you need to be careful and in both directions, not committing to things that, you know. You might not be able to follow through on, um, but also not leaving it so vague that there never is any follow-up. Um, or it's unclear what the follow-up should be. Um, and already there is some movement to attaching some, some timeframes to some of the pieces in the comp plan. Um, um, so far, it's only been in terms of, um. Uh, implementation, um, in the short term, medium term or long term, so. But at least that's in there, uh, you know, right, right now. Um, so there are a number of things that, you know, have been, have been prioritized that need. Need attention in the short term, but it's not been. Um, um, I don't think the work is complete enough to actually come up with, you know. A specific implementation timeframe for any of these things, yeah.
There, there was some discussion about, and maybe, maybe you already do, addressed this before, but there was some discussion about a potential historical district overlay. Land use overlay, and I just didn't know. Where that, if that was still on the table or if that had been discussed any further or. That, that had come up multiple, multiple times. I just wondering where that was at.
Um, I don't, I don't remember where that's at. There is some discussion about, um. Historical features and structures and so forth in a couple of the chapters in the comp plan. But I'd have to look back. I'll, I'll make a note of that and take a look, Henry, there.
Yeah, Matt, Matt would def, Matt would definitely remember those discussions and.
Yeah.
But it directly impacts like the land use maps and some of those things, so I just wanted to.
Okay, right, but I'll, uh. I'll put that on my list.
Just trying to think of things that we would have to do.
I found a bunch of things in the draft that had been, had been assigned to the planning board. Um, that absolutely shouldn't be, um, things like, I don't know, there was something about. Uh, traffic and, and, and. Road speeds and a, a, a bunch of crazy stuff, and there were a number of things anyway. So we're going back and extricating a lot of that and making adjustments, but. No, it's still, it's still pretty rough and there's a lot of, a lot of eyes on it, a lot of work that's happening still, but. In any event, um, at a point when it's a little, in a little better shape, it will come back. So that all of you can have another look at it and comment again. Um, so I think the only other thing on the agenda tonight, we have two sets of minutes, um. The first from. January tenth.
I had a question about that.
Those are the ones that I sent in edits to?
You, you did send in edits, except I don't think that you have any edits to the discussion about the comp plan. And that was the piece that I wanted to mark up.
Okay.
Um, and so I do have some changes in that, that piece of it, um, specifically, so. Um.
I interrupted Henry, sorry.
Be- before you get to that complaint piece, which is further down in the minutes, on the first page. There was a question, Jack, about this, um, um. When we originally were looking at the, um. Uh, Roy's, Dan and Connie Roy's application, and it says in that first paragraph. Uh, something about the abutter would not allow the shed within a twenty-foot setback.
Oh, that was the, on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe clarify that because it's very confusing because, um, my impression and my memory was that they actually would allow it. But I think it's correct that it's not.
Yeah.
You know, we just need, it just needs to say the. Whatever the eastern abutter.
Okay.
Is that you and Jelica?
Yeah, it is. I'm here.
I think it's the eastern abutter, if I'm, I just can't remember the, the, the map, but. Let me just pull it up. You don't, don't want to get the wrong abutter, because if, you know, it's, it's not true, it's not a true statement if it's not the right abutter.
Yeah, it's the fourth paragraph.
Why can't I find it? Anybody have that mapping? Oh, here, I got it here. Sorry, just give me one second. I just have to scroll down to the. It is the. Of course, nobody puts north on the maps anymore.
I'm sitting uh, in my house. I'm uh, same way as he is, so it would be the uh, what do we figure? North side, south side, south side.
The south, southeastern side, south.
Right, yeah. Cause our sun sets in the west that way, and it's that way. So, yeah.
Yep, it looks like it's the southeastern butter.
Thank you.
Lot one oh six dash zero nine zero.
Very good.
In, in, in that piece also, in the uh, in the third paragraph, um, I was going to suggest a wording change in the last sentence that begins unfortunately.
Yeah, I just noticed that actually too.
Um, and um, I'm going to suggest that it say, it was explained that the planning board does not issue variances. Rather than unfortunately, the planning board does not issue variances.
Yeah.
I don't think it's unfortunate.
Right.
And uh, I, I think it's more accurate to say that, you know, that we don't issue those. Um, and is seeking conformance with the provisions of the L U O. Rather than conformance on the applications.
Okay, got it.
Anybody else in that first piece?
So I'm, I'm still a little confused that, cause I have two copies of the January tenth minutes, one, the markup that Jack made. Uh, and those, and then the other was sent more recently, but does not include those markups or.
Yeah, I gave wrong that when we redistributed them. Um, so that the Jack edits would be the most recent technically.
So the changes that were just made would be added to what I've already done, I guess.
Right, yeah. Yeah, this isn't showing any of um, Jack's edits. This is right before, this is the first set that I sent out.
So Chip, when you sent out the minutes, you sent out two sets of minutes and the application materials, those minutes were the ones that Jack edited?
No, I thought, I thought they were, but it sounds like they're not. So I'd say, why don't you hold them off to the next meeting?
Well, everyone got them.
Right, everyone should have Jack's edit as well.
Were they redlined, Jack?
You tell them which one, I'm, I'm beyond this.
Were they redlined, Jack?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I found them, just again, I found them. We're here, let's do it.
Okay, so everybody need a minute to look at Jack's revisions?
I think they were sent out on February first.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pulling them up.
Yeah, it says there, Paula, the planning board is not authorized to grant variances.
Whoa. Oh, good. I'm glad to see, Jack, that you didn't edit the sentence that I just edited. That's excellent. Yeah, those are good, Jack.
Good to meet you. John and George are used up with that piece of it?
Yes, it's, yeah.
Okay.
I am as well.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm really not sure what the best way to approach the comprehensive plan section is. I, I had some computer issues um, that did not allow me to do an electronic markup. And what I have in front of me um, is uh, is a marked up version. I have a lot of changes on it. Um, I can go through those verbally, or I can um, I can do a markup for next time. Um, but I don't have an electronic markup to share with you right now.
Oh.
Do it next time.
Okay. Um, I had um, I had quite a lot, and
Adam, Adam to Jack's.
Okay. Um, yeah, if, if I can, if I can do that, I, I'm not going to get into my computer issues uh, and bore you all with that, but um, I'll see what I
We know, we know some of us are technically challenged more than others. It's okay.
I'm not talking about technical challenge. I'm talking about something else, which is quite mechanical. Okay, um, all right, let's, let's set those aside and I'll, I'll get those out. Um, and we also have the set from February thirteenth. And I have um, I have a few things there. Um, Jack, you didn't mark these up and send them around, did you?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, in the first paragraph of discussion on land use ordinances, um, I would suggest modifying that first sentence to say, um, there would not be any radical changes to the L U O as opposed to the ordinances or to the land use ordinance. But there are areas where they could bring some clarity to certain provisions of the L U O. That second sentence, I, I didn't feel like it, it, it was a little unclear to me, and it didn't feel like it added much, and I would suggest just striking the sentence that begins a couple of ordinances. And then pick um, also striking, there is some new language. And begin that sentence with Jack drafted and start new language pertaining to the height of buildings.
Got it.
And then toward the end, uh, and the flood statute that is consistent with language in state laws. Strike already.
Okay. Okay.
And I would also suggest, um, I don't, you know, I don't think for purposes of the minutes that we need to list all of the paragraphs that are in section um, section four that we were proposing to reorganize. And I think that rather than just listing all of that, you could simply say um, reorganizing um, section four A through H for clarity. Um, in the paragraph that starts chip requested, um, there was a fair bit of confusion. It was a confusing discussion that we had about that, but there was um, a lot of detail here that I, I think would, would be confusing to people. And I would suggest simply saying Chip suggested use of a D E P schematic concerning applications of the greatest practical extent standard. And then get rid of most of that paragraph, but leave um, um, the last sentence, uh, Chip was going to get no schematic and we were going to look at it.
Okay.
That didn't happen, but that's what we talked about doing.
Right.
And the rest of it, um, I, I think will just confuse people, so I would. Um, down about two thirds of the way, there's a sentence that begins new state legislature, um, that should be legislation regarding building heights. And then the paragraph that begins under article eight, section sixteen B two. Um, just insert after non-agricultural, uh, insert the word storage. Cause that's what we were talking about there was storage activity.
Okay.
And then the last thing I had is on uh, page three, where it begins, uh, the paragraph per the above discussion. Um, there will need to be additions made to the Reedfield L U O. Um, I would insert there consistent with
Mm-hmm.
the accessory dwelling unit legislation. Because in fact, those changes need to be made before it becomes effective. So um, eliminate um, just put a period after legislation and eliminate the rest of the sentence.
Okay.
So are there, are there comments? That's, that's all I have in this.
Don't make a motion to approve the minutes of, what is it, January, February tenth?
February thirteenth.
Thirteenth as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Help for a vote, um, Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Henry?
I have to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
And Paula, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, um, thank you, Angelica. Very much. Um, I think uh, that brings us to the end, unless anyone has anything else you want to put on the table at this point.
Next meeting is the fourteenth.
Next meeting is the fourteenth. Um, there are a couple of applications that Chip has in the works. Um, and um, we will schedule the hearing for the ordinance changes.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you all. There is nothing else. Uh, we are returned.
Thank you. Yep.
Night.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you.